Oh, whoa. Alrighty, alrighty. Okay, so, good afternoon. My name is Jason Chavez and I am the Chair of the Committee of the Whole. I'm going to call to order our adjourned committee meeting for Wednesday, November 13th. Before we begin the meeting, I want to offer a friendly reminder to all members, staff, and the public at these meetings are broadcast live to enable greater public participation. These broadcasts include real-time captioning as a further method to increase the accessibility of our proceedings to the community. Therefore, all speakers need to be mindful of the rate of their speech so that our captioners can fully capture and transcribe all comments for the broadcast. We ask all speakers to moderate the speed and clarity of their comments. At this time, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll to verify the presence of a quorum.
Councilmember Payne.
Present.
Wonsley. It's absent. Rainville? It's absent. Vita?
Present.
Ellison? Is absent. Osman?
Present.
Cashman?
Present.
Jenkins?
Present.
Chogtai?
Present.
Koski?
Present.
Pal Mazano?
Present.
Vice Chair Chowdhury?
Present.
Chair Chavez?
Present.
And Councilmember Rainville?
Present.
There are eleven members present.
Let the record reflect that we have a quorum. We will start with our continued items from yesterday, which is an update on the community engagement efforts at George Floyd Square and the GFS Visioning and Priorities Report. The committee's discussion time was cut short, so we'll continue with our discussion if we can have staff come up just to answer a few questions that members may have. And I'll look at the queue as we set up a new one. Is there any questions from any members of the body? Councilmember Cashman.
Okay, thank you, Chair Chavez. Have had, you know, a few hours to look at this since our meeting yesterday. So, I do want to, I don't know if you have the presentation on you, but just to see this chart that lays out these different options of pedestrian-only, pedestrian and transit-only, pedestrian cars and transit, and see how you, the question here is, how did you analyze the value of those three options against the community engagement that you heard?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Councilmember Cashman. I'm gonna have Nathan Koster come close by as well because this obviously has been part of the work of Public Works staff as well. I want to start by saying that when this process was getting restarted, because there were two years of engagement on the Streets project ahead of this, and actually, a process before 2020 as well. And so, when this part of the process started this year, there was a lot of interest in a pedestrian plaza. In fact, that's kind of where we all started. And what you are seeing here is the pedestrian plaza option that would potentially work. I want to give the caveat that I think it's important to pair this. Sorry, the keyboard is in a different direction, so every now and then I'm like, where's that going to? I think it's important to look at this slide as well when we talk about the pedestrian plaza. And you can see on Chicago, what's happening with the green dots that are north of the square. Wish I could do this with a pointer or something. Those green dots are business access. They are driveways for businesses. And in the engagement, which touched 25,000 people, it touched the 15 businesses directly in this area. The challenge of this is if the city cuts off access to those businesses, which we do not legally just get to do, we have to, as a city, find a new access point for each of those businesses. So that is why, when you are seeing this slide, it has the pedestrian plaza as a smaller portion of this with a cul-de-sac. That, I will say, is not really what people thought of when they were thinking of a pedestrian plaza. They thought of the entire long block, nearly block and a half, as being closed to access. Businesses have told us very clearly they do not want that. They need to have the business access for deliveries, business, all sorts of things. The transit mall option, another option that was discussed quite a bit. The challenge there is that is actually the least preferred option of people surveyed, talked to. That is the least satisfying, to have only bus transit on this section of the street. So, that is where flexible open comes in, with the ability to shut the street on a needs basis, both for planned events and potentially even unplanned events. So that the, there would be, I think Nathan showed a number of options that we have seen in other cities that are done, you know, possibly working with the Fire Arts Center on something there, would be an option, to have a permanent closure ability on this street. So, that is how these three options came about.
Okay, thank you, COO Anderson Keller-Her. And do you have an engagement summary? Just specifically on the Public Works part? And, you know, these three options? I know that with the Franklin Avenue reconstruction and the New Nicollet reconstruction, there's been amazing work done on summarizing the community engagement and the preferences. Do you have info on that?
So, Mr. Chair and Councilmember Cashman and committee members, in your packet is a pretty detailed, I think, I think it's about seven pages. It's actually longer than that. But the pages that I have are about eight pages of detailed engagement, and we certainly could break it down in different ways. But, like I said, 25,000 interactions on this project in terms of engagement. And the purpose of the engagement was, yes, both to explore the discussion about potential memorials, the People's Way, but this always has started as the reconstruction of the street. And so, that has been a major focus all the way along. But we can get you more detailed information.
Sure, yeah, thanks. I do plan to meet with Public Works on Monday, and other councilmembers are welcome to join that meeting too, so long as we don't break quorum, so let me know. And I guess I would like to, and this can be for Monday, but see how we analyzed those various options in terms of our goals, like vehicle miles traveled. We want to reduce vehicle miles traveled. Well, disallowing cars is a good way to do that, right? We also want mode shift goals. We want people to take transit and to walk instead, and closing streets to cars is another, is a good way of doing that. So, wondering how we, you know, how we balanced all the different demands here to come to this recommendation. And then, one last question, I think, for now, is just, what's the average time that we wait to reconstruct a street? So when was this last reconstructed, as opposed to like an average for when, you know, Hennepin Avenue or Franklin Avenue or these other big reconstructions are happening?
Mr. Chair, Councilmember Cashman, the last reconstruction of this street was 1958, 1959. So I'm doing my math quickly in my head. That's sixty-six? Sixty-six years.
Okay.
I was born in 68, so I'm doing the math quickly. And so that is, you know, we usually have, our goal is to reconstruct somewhere between 50 and 60 years. And it does depend on the street, the volume, the usage, all of those things.
Okay. Thank you for, you know, answering some of the questions that I had. And I just wanted to just close with just saying that I think there's like a little bit of a cognitive dissonance on saying the open street option is the one with cars, when we have all these open streets events every year, which the definition of open in that case is pedestrian-only, right? So like, what does open mean as far as a street? And I like to strive towards the open for pedestrians as the goal versus open for cars as the goal. And so, those definitions feel like they're being used, you know, in a little bit of a dissonant way here. Thanks.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Thank you, Chair Chavez. I'm just wondering, again, I just want to thank staff for all of the work that has been done on this project. You know, I, I have a personal preference that a transit and pedestrian only would be a really great option. Also have really long-term experience with the reality that we are now reopening Nicollet Avenue because of the same kind of closure at the cost of millions of dollars to rebuild that street. I really don't want to see us go back to those kinds of mistakes. But I'm curious if we can get an accounting of how many staff hours have been committed to this work over time? Maybe a memo?
We can note that for administrative follow-up? If we need to repeat the question, we can. I believe the question is how much staff time has been used in the process. I'm assuming through engagement of the development of this project?
Through engagement, through design process, including consultants. There have been several consultants on this project as well.
Perfect. And if there's questions that you have after, we could just follow up.
Thank you.
Cool. Are those all your questions, Councilmember Jenkins?
That is.
Perfect, thank you. Awesome. I have a few questions too. I've been hearing in the media that there's around $5 million allocated to develop this reconstruction project in the media. Can you correct me if that is an accurate statement, or where the money in the budget is, is in the current budget right now? Is it being proposed by the mayor's budget about a $5 million reconstruction project at, in this area?
Chair, members of the committee, my name is Nathan Koster, Transportation Planning Manager with Public Works. Your question is about the budget for the project, so this is under PV 177. This was appropriated through previous budgets, so it was identified in 2021, 2022, and 2023, so there's already appropriations for the project that have been approved by council. There are no future appropriations on this budget because we're waiting to determine what the street would be, so then we can estimate it and then identify the budget to fill any gaps that would be needed to build the project and the vision that is identified.
And how much is that?
Oh, I'm sorry. I did forget that key point. It is what you said, it's approximately $5.5 million.
So there's $5.5 million that just gets rolled over every single year then, or?
That's currently, it's currently sitting in the appropriations for the capital, identified for the capital project, and as Councilmember Jenkins alluded to, that's being used to cover staff time, consultants, and project development to date.
And how much, and, well, I guess you're gonna determine what the future of this is, to determine what the actual cost is, but is there a specific set amount that you all are setting aside for construction that you have in mind?
Chair, until we have a project that is defined, we don't have a detailed estimate to understand what we're gonna build. So, once we get the concept layout approval, then we're able to advance engineering and come up with detailed estimates that include all the staff time, which we call soft costs for engineering, construction administration, as well as the physical materials and labor to build whatever project there is. So, right now, we've incurred about $1.6 million in costs to date, and until we have a plan to move forward, we don't know what the total cost would be.
So, in the budgets, where this has been allocated, what is it under? Is it just construction then, development? The details for this? Like, what are the guardrails for it?
Chair.
That was a computer.
Chair, when we submit the budget request for projects, it identifies specific costs that are broken down for project development, which include planning, design, surveying the streets, as well as estimates for construction. So that's what goes through click and then was ultimately approved by council when the budget was appropriated. As projects move through the CIP and they get closer to construction, then we are informed more by like what the details of the project would be to have a more full representation of what it would take to fully complete the project.
Thank you. But in your opinion, this is, project is already funded?
Chair, right now, there is funding for the project. We do, we do know that more funding will be needed to complete the full construction. It is not enough to do the full project. And that's where, once we have a completed plan, we'd revisit the budget to determine what is necessary.
Thank you. My second question's about the People's Way. Would really love to hear from staff perspective, what guardrails you all have in place in this process to make sure that the project is community-led, and that big investment in terms of corporate corporations aren't the ones trying to lead the future of the People's Way, and instead actually is led by the people that live in the area. Welcome, Director.
Chair Chavez, I'll answer that question. Reintroduce myself to this new committee. I'm Eric Hansen, the CPID Director. So in the RFQ, you'll notice that there's a requirement that the community partner must be a nonprofit. So right there, it's a, it's nonprofit. It can be a partnership, but the leader of the group has to be a nonprofit, and that is to to address that concern you have about a corporation coming in, because this is not, we don't believe, you know, we are, we are the owner because the, the owner of the Speedway or the People's Way before us only wanted to sell to the city. So we were able to negotiate the deal to get this property, and we want to make sure that it is, you know, with a community-minded owner. And so that's what the process has set up. That's why we've done a request for qualifications as opposed to a request for proposals. In a request for qualifications, we bring in the partner without an idea. And then that partner works with us, the staff, the elected officials, and the community about what the idea is. So it keeps a lot of that power and decision-making authority through that iterative process with that, with that development partner in tow, as opposed to a request for proposals, which is they, that proposer brings in the idea, and then we say up or down on that idea, we like it or we don't. And that kind of puts a lot of power into the, into the proposer. So that's the, the, the kind of that's our approach to this process, to make sure that we are doing this in concert with community, so that when we get to the outcomes, which is ultimately selling this property to a community-supporting entity for a community-supporting use, there is support in the community because they've been participating and brought along from the beginning.
Thank you.
Yep.
And then, my last question for now is on the pedestrian plaza component. This will be for Director, I'm a COO, Anderson Keller-Her. Can you explain the two transit stations on 38th Street on the pedestrian plaza one? Or it looks, it looks like there's two Ts on 38th Street. Is that just? If you can help explain that.
Are you, okay, I'm gonna have you do it.
Chair, the question I heard was specific to the transit stations on the south leg of Chicago, just south of 38th, correct?
Yep.
All right. I will advance the slides because we did cover it at the end of the presentation, but there's a lot of material yesterday. So, this is where we have been working with Metro Transit, and this was, those areas represent where the Route 5 and the D-line stations would be placed with transit service returning on two of the concepts that we worked with the community. Under the pedestrian plaza option, I do have to go back in slides. Those stations would not be there, because in order to get transit to return along Chicago, it has to allow it to go through the block to the north. Buses, both what is the shorter buses, the 40-foot buses, and the, what they're called articulated buses that are longer, they cannot make the turns through there. And what we heard is the traffic circle is very, very important. So under the two of the options, transit can return along Chicago, whether it is open north-south, and under the pedestrian plaza, it's not there. So, the Ts you're seeing on the pedestrian plaza would be, represent Route 23 along 38th Street, where on Transit Mall and Flexible Open, just south would represent stations that would look similar to what I showed on that last slide. The Metro Transit would be advancing with Route 5 or D-line service returning to the corridor.
Thank you. Okay, and then we have Councilmember Osman on cue.
I, I'm not sure, maybe I'm repeating myself. But when's, when is the final layout be presented? And does that requires council approval?
So, Mr. Chair, Councilmember Osman. The, I think there's a good question in that for the city attorney about layout and the role of council. The choice has been to bring the concept layout through the CNI Committee, much as was done with Hennepin Avenue as a concept layout. I think there is some difference, whether that is needed or not, but that is the choice that we have made to bring that, because the reason why is that risk would be very high if we advanced one of these proposals and then came back for potentially contract approval, if there does need to be another budget allocation for the project, that, that increases risk. We would be really going down a pathway of spending quite a bit of money. The layout, the goal was for construction to begin after the anniversary of George Floyd's murder this year, the fifth anniversary, that the utility street work would begin and the construction would begin, with then the goal to be totally complete by 2027. And the street would be reopened, and the next parts of the process could be moving forward. Reinstallation of the artworks that you heard about yesterday, the work on Memorial, all of those sorts of items. If this pushes into next year, it is going to push construction into 2026 with then completion pushing out from there. That would have to happen very early next year for us to meet the construction schedule of 2026. If it goes into later 2026, which I think has been proposed by some folks, not, I'm not saying any council members, I'm just saying I've heard that, into the fall of next year, that pushes, that pushes out another two years. And so we're really looking at construction somewhere in '27 to '28, completion '28, '29.
Thank you. And this side being a very high-profile historic site, was there interest or engagement, or have you heard from the state or federal, this being a symbol of justice and the movement?
Mr. Chair, Councilmember Osman, I think on the street reconstruction project, unless there's something really unforeseen that is underneath the street, this is a fairly straightforward part of the project. I think when we get to talking about what, how, what type of future development at the People's Way, what might happen with future memorials, additional memorials, there is, there has been interest by others in at least raising their hand to say they're interested in talking about that. Now, obviously, the change in the federal government may change the federal government's point of view on that, but I do know there are many state legislators who've been interested in how could there be participation here?
Thank you. And my last comment is that I really appreciate the Public Works and the staff for the process and the community engagement and being respected, all voices that's come from the community. You know, I respect the community that live there, that, you know, experienced, that experienced, horrible experience, and also councilmembers, like Councilmember Jenkins, who has been involved in this work for a long time, and Councilmember Chavez, who has been also involved in this. So, just want to thank you and thank the staff and all the people that are involved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Cashman.
Thank you, Chair Chavez. I will email all of my questions over to the Public Works Department for our Monday meeting, but just wanted to raise, like, last year in the state legislature omnibus bill, we got the authority to create pedestrian malls, and I would love to hear how we're planning to use that authority, and why wouldn't this be a perfect case of an opportunity to use our new authority to create a pedestrian-only space?
So, Mr. Chair and Councilmember Cashman, I can say, because I was very involved in that, both as Public Works Director and then in this role with the Government Relations Team and our two Chairs of Transportation, both Chair Dibble and Chair Hornstein. We sought expanded authority because potentially of this project. It could be used on this project. The, the difference is, after we went out and did our engagement and talked to the businesses, talked to the residents, the desire is for having a more open street in this area. And so, it could be used. It also could be used in a number of other places. It could be used in northeast Minneapolis, in the area that, is it Quincy Street? I mean, there are a number of places in the city that we have identified that potentially either could have a flexible option to it or could be fully pedestrianized. And so that's why we sought that. And I think it's a good tool that we have in our toolbox now, and hopefully we'll get to use it again.
Hey, thanks.
Councilmember Vita.
Thank you, Chair Chavez. I don't have questions. I just wanted to say thank you so much to Councilmember Jenkins. You know, I know that this has been tough on you, both professionally and personally. You've been there the whole way with this. You've done a lot of community engagement, talked to thousands of people, community members throughout this entire city, visitors, anyone who's wanted to talk about this project. You've done that. You've been a leader. You're one of the kindest people I know. You're a great listener. You've done way more than I ever imagined someone could do on this project, and thank you so much to the staff who has supported Councilmember Jenkins in this work. You know, I know that it's never gonna be the perfect or the right project for everybody, but I'm proud of you, friend. I really am. I'm so proud of everything you've done here, even engaging Northsiders. It's not in my ward, but Northsiders want to know what's going on over there as well. So, thank you so much for everything you've done. I have your back. I support you because I know that you and staff have done the right thing. Thank you.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Thank you, Chair Chavez. I'm curious if COO Anderson Keller-Her could come up, or some of the staff maybe as well. You know, part of the alternate vision has been, why not use those funds? Whatever, 5.5 million, or the, why not reconstruct 38th and 4th Avenue? Instead of Chicago? Can, can we get a response to that?
So, Mr. Chair and Councilmember Jenkins, I'll, I will give you my best answer on this. I think that one of the things is that in order to honor the memory of George Perry Floyd and to develop the People's Way, which is, this process is underway, having the street as the canvas of being in the best condition possible, having those utilities updated. There are 38, 38-led service lines that go to businesses and residences in this area that the city will totally replace. There are a number of conflicting, I'm most certain, there are a number of conflicting utility interactions underneath this intersection. And so to use these resources to be able to get that into the shape, and I just keep going back to the canvas as a painter myself, that we do not want to have a situation where, when the memorials or the artwork or the artwork is being reinstalled or being built or the next iteration of the memorial comes, that then 10 years from now, when we are 75 years on of the age of this street, that we're then saying to everyone, "We're sorry, we're gonna have to rip this all up and take this apart." So using those resources for the reconstruction at this point, at this location, really lays the groundwork for the next 50, 60 years of what happens at George Floyd Square.
Yeah, thank you for that. I, I guess, my question, I mean, knowing that this has been a part of the CIP process or the CLIC process, um, for several years, I mean, is it possible to just shift to a different project? Is that a reality?
Mr. Chair, Councilmember Jenkins, there's a process that Public Works would go through if somehow a project doesn't go forward. I do wanna say though, since even this project first entered into the CLIC process and the CIP, which was before George Floyd was murdered, the, and the work that's been done since by Public Works on the Racial Equity Framework for Transportation, it, it would be a very, it would have to be a very like-type of project to be able to, I would say, shift that, those resources to. Because this project does meet many of the goals of the Racial Equity Framework for Transportation. It's adding bike lanes, it's adding wider sidewalks, it's adding a half acre of green space land, the ability to treat the water, the 38-led service lines being replaced.
Hopefully it will add street lighting as well. One of the-
Mr. Chair, yes, street lighting.
One of the interesting, um, dilemmas, I guess, at 38th and Chicago has been for a very long time, like, we can't add banners to say Merry Christmas or Happy Quondo or George Floyd Square or anything because there's no streetlights. Like, literally there are no poles to hang things on. And I see staff nodding, and then this has been a dilemma for the past 25 years. When the Business Association wanted to hang those kinds of things, it's like, sorry, we can't put Christmas lights up, like at 48th and Chicago or Chicago and Lake or many, many areas around the city 'cause there are no streetlights. So hopefully that would be a part of the plan as well. And then I just wanted to speak to the, you know, the, I, the question about how do we make sure, um, that corporations don't take over the People's Way? I mean, that was the whole intent of the purchase of that property is to make sure that we could have a say in who is the property owner. The 38th Street Thrive Plan, uh, which was developed with hundreds of community members and, in 2018, and then subsequently approved by the council in 2021, has a specific area around community ownership of anything that happens at 38th and Chicago. And that was prior to the murder of George Floyd. So, the whole intent of, um, maintaining some kind of community control at that intersection has been, um, documented as well as the purchase of the, um, People's Way again solidifies the, um, intent and desire to ensure that there is community control at that intersection.
Mr. Chair, I'd just point out, I think Mr. Hanson did a great job earlier. I wanna point out that on the slide that's titled "The People's Way RFQ", there is a January to March 2025 applicants' presentation and community review. So that's another step in the process that is going to be important to what happens at the People's Way.
Thank you, uh, that concludes my remarks.
Council President Payne.
Thank you, Chair Chavez. Yeah, you invoking Quincy Street, the Logan Park Industrial Project, just, you know, there's, uh, some odd similarities here in that there's a reverence for these built environments. Now, in the case of Northeast, that reverence comes from a place of joy versus a place of trauma. And how our city responds to the meaning and importance of that built environment is gonna have a pretty profound impact on the community. I can't begin to imagine what it's been like for Councilmember Jenkins to navigate, you know, holding all of these truths, some of which are just diametrically opposed. For me, in the Arts District, we have a lot of working artists who absolutely need vehicle access to their studios on Quincy. There's some live-work spaces in some of the buildings, so there's kind of like a need for parking that is got both residential and commercial. And some of these, and then there's like a vast desire to have it be a pedestrian plaza because of things like Art-A-World, like I said, grounded in joy. And I think one of the things I'm kind of struggling here is, with here is, you know, I think there's an imagination gap, and I don't know if that's an imagination gap on my end or imagination gap on the institution's end. And I'm wondering if we could start filling some of that gap with a little bit more, actually, this is a great slide to, to be on, 'cause I mean, I think a lot of what are the, the tension that we're holding here is that there are people that want to shut the space off for reverence purposes, right? And having vehicles driving, you know, every, every option, you know, protects the physical location where George Floyd was murdered, but still the idea of cars, you know, dividing through this space that was frankly one of the most meaningful places for my own personal healing. The first time I went to George Floyd Square and was in community was the first time that, like, my gut started to get a little bit untangled from just the trauma of watching that happen. And I see with our open, flexible option, this idea of these gates that you could close down, I see that as a technical choice, but I don't know if that's, like, what, what would that look like in practice? And, and then I also wanna explore, um, this idea of, of Woonerf, of, like, these businesses absolutely need access so that they can, you know, replace inventory, have deliveries. And that certainly should be able to be something that can be accomplished in harmony with still protecting a pedestrian prioritized destination. And I'm just curious, is that like for statutory reasons not an option? Or is it like a lack of imagination on our part?
Chair, Council President Payne, these are really great questions, and I can build upon some of the presentation elements that I discussed yesterday. And I really wanna get back to the canvas of working with the community for the imagination part, because this isn't just us, and I think what I was trying to highlight yesterday was more about listening, and listening about those details, what makes it meaningful. So when we think about the type of placemaking and experience, it could get down to the curbs, the, like, the feelings about how you can move through that space. But one thing I wanna highlight that you've brought up and other council members have is, we worked really closely with our delegation on the pedestrian mall state statute, but there still are regulations in there that are specific to business access, loading and delivery that are critical. And I think you brought up specifically Quincy Street in Northeast, that's going to also be something challenging to work through. But really coming back to like the imagination, the art, the placemaking, and how we could work with the community on this canvas to do the things that you call out, are really important things that we would truly embrace and wanna continue with that engagement that we highlighted yesterday. But one thing that we have heard specifically, and for those who are out there visiting, when we're doing engagement with how the sidewalks are blocked off and how people are consistently in the street, is there's aspects where people are like, "It's not working, and I don't feel safe always being in the street, and there has to be a way to better organize this." So people with mobility devices or visitors feel safe in a protected space, so when they're there gathering, uh, as groups, visiting and having that emotional or personal experience, that they aren't worried about being, you know, hit by a vehicle or for their personal safety from that. So, those are things that we're very committed to, like, exploring and identifying. And unlike other projects where we get the layout and we need to do the engineering, this is very much like one of many, many steps that we'd have to continue on this journey with the community.
And then this is a more technical question, um, uh, building off of some of the remarks that Councilmember Jenkins made, just from a funding stream perspective, did this go through regional solicitation? Are we having to do a local match? Or, like, what flexibility is there based on the funding stream?
Chair Chavez, Council President Payne, this one does not have any grant funding associated with it. With a lot of projects, we do look at funding, but specific to this project, we wanted to make sure we didn't put any strings or attachments on the process. So when we wanted to get creative and envision this, we did not wanna feel tethered to a schedule because of federal funding or other things. Those are definitely things that we do consider, continue to explore and consider, but because of many of the sensitivities of this place, we felt like at that time that wasn't something that, uh, we necessarily want to pursue and make sure we kept all options available.
I'm glad to hear that, 'cause, I, I mean, it, it kind of builds on maybe another consideration then is, to what extent do the decisions that we need to make here, not today, but sounding like next week, are those constraining choices in the future?
Chair Chavez, Council President, I might need a little bit more clarity on that question.
Uh, so like, so, in, in the example of, you know, I'm thinking 37th Avenue in my ward, which was done through regional solicitation, and it had some federal funding sources plus the shared jurisdiction with Columbia Heights. Once we set things in motion, we really wanted to keep them in motion so that all of those funding streams can come together, 'cause it was kind of complex. Alternatively, Hennepin Avenue, I feel we had a little bit more agency over in terms of the timeline, the layout. You know, we had a big debate about 24/7 bus lanes. You know, whether it's a part-time lane or a full-time lane, it's the same street design layout, and we still have the flexibility in the future to make that a 24/7 bus lane, as an example. I'm trying to understand, to what extent are we constraining our design choices through approval processes that are happening today?
Chair Chavez, Council President Payne, the timeline isn't constraining the design options. Since we don't have a specific deadline for funding or other things, we know that as we advanced engagement, one thing we did here is, although there's a wide range of ideas, there was definitely people in the community saying, "It's been a long time, we'd like to see something." Like, they may agree fundamentally with, uh, the arts, the gathering, but it's just not working, whether it's for people walking in the street or accessibility, ADA access impacts with transit service, like, people will wanna see something? And there's definitely a disagreement on what that something is, but there's definitely a desire to see something. And what we're trying to bring forward and reflecting our work is bringing forward all those thoughts and ideas and how they align with the values and priorities that we heard to have this, have council consider as we bring forward these recommendations. But to clarify, there's no, like, specific deadline that we have to meet for some funding application or some requirement that you highlighted in other examples.
So, so as an example, Councilmember Jenkins shared a personal preference for the transit-only, uh, option. I think the presentation puts a pretty strong recommendation around the flexible open. There's a gap between that. Any vote that we take this cycle or next cycle, uh, those, those differences could evolve based on, like, that decision, that it's not constraining us to one or the other in that instance. Is that correct?
Chair Chavez, Council President, uh, what I hear is, um, that could be an operational change. And what we're having approved is the concept layout, which is generally, we keep using this term, canvas is a starting point of generally where, where are the curbs gonna go? How wide are the sidewalks are? Are there gonna be trees? How are we meeting the ordinance to make sure we can have green space to treat the water and plant trees? But it doesn't include the operational aspects of, like, the signing or the striping.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chair, um, if I could just add a little bit, I think that one of the reasons to not seek regional solicitation, and I'm not sure it'd be eligible anyway for it, but is those types of awards usually come with more restrictions. And it's not just a deadline restriction, but they can have other restrictions on them. And so having it be the funds of the city that are going towards the street reconstruction seems to make the most sense for flexibility. I have often talked about my visit to the Lorraine Motel in Memphis and how moving that was. I went there when I was PW Director to be able to see that fundamentally has a story about the street because Martin Luther King Jr. was shot from across the street. And I am, I, I've done a little bit of research on this. In the beginning, the street wasn't closed right away. The street has become closed over time as the National Park Service did the designation and everything that has come around it. And there are actually still flexibility in that street for emergency vehicles, for other vehicles to get through if needed. I think this is, we are on a journey at George Floyd Square. And flexible open gives us a lot of flexibility in the future as to the operations on this street and what might come.
Thank you. No one else is on cue. So seeing no further discussion, I will direct a clerk to receive and file that report. Our next item is receiving a second council tracking report. I will ask the city clerk to come up and present that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Casey Carley. As you said, I have the privilege of serving as clerk for the City of Minneapolis. May it please the committee, I'm here to present the second council tracking report, which traces the status of ordinances, enterprise policies and legislative directives. The council tracking report is divided into sections that correspond with specific types of council action shown on this slide. As you can see, those categories include ordinances, which are essentially municipal statutes or local laws, enterprise policies, which are resolutions establishing policy or priority positions to provide consistent direction for city operations, and legislative directives, which are formalized requests to the mayor to support the council's legislative and policymaking functions as authorized by city charter. Based on feedback from the first report in August, we've added a fourth category to track, and that includes council's directives to its own legislative department. Finally, I should note that this second report builds on the data that was included in the first report from August. We have not removed any of the items that were included in the first report. Instead, we have simply added new items that were introduced since that report, and we've also updated those items from the first report that continue to exist on this report. Data is primarily sourced from the city's Legislative Information Management System, or LIMs. There's a table for each of these categories that's shown in four columns. The first three columns, from left to right, reflect the data that's pulled from LIMs. The fourth column on the right includes notes about the item's status. These notes include comments that we've gathered from council members, from the clerk's office and from the administration. Throughout the report, clerks have embedded hyperlinks to relevant files, official acts, and to related documents to increase the report's usefulness. Finally, in the section on staff directives at the end, you'll find several links to the Policy and Research Division's online library of reports. As council members know, the Policy and Research Division has done an excellent job at showing their work. They did that at the budget presentation just before this meeting on their work on participatory budgeting. The Policy and Research Division has posted all of their briefings, their reports and other materials to their website to promote awareness, accessibility and accountability for their work. So a big kudos to Mr. Hawkins and his team for those efforts. I think it adds significant value and certainly a high degree- adds significant value and certainly a high degree of transparency and accessibility for the community. And I think it's potentially a model for the administration to consider in showing their work in a similar matter. Before getting into details, I want to take a few minutes just to level set where we were in August as a result of the first report. Council members will recall a few points that I made at that time. The first observation is that the pace of this council this year has been extraordinary. In just the first seven months, council introduced and considered a total of 48 ordinances. That's about double the total volume for all of '22 and all of 2023. In fact, as I reported in August, that volume is nearly comparable to the total volume considered in both of those prior years. And that was in just seven months. And on top of that, the first report showed that just shy of 70% of all of the council's legislative proposals were actively being developed and moving toward final action in the process. Second, the data clearly showed that in the majority of cases, productive collaboration between council and administration was the norm, not the exception. In all but a small number of instances, the first report showed active work was underway to respond to council's proposals, directives, and requests. And where items had stalled, the notes reflected that offline conversations were occurring between council members and departments to better frame up desired goals and outcomes. I don't think I can overemphasize that point enough. There is a false narrative that the city is not working, that there is discord and disconnect between the council and administration, that there is deliberate delay or intentional efforts by the administration to be unresponsive to the council, that there is some disconnect with that policy direction. But the data shown in these reports proves otherwise. And I will echo Councilmember Chowdhury's comments from just a few weeks ago, when she said, "Good governance is backed by good data." These reports highlight data that prove that despite the occasional appearances, the city is working to advance shared goals and common concerns that aim to serve the people of Minneapolis. These reports identify the highest levels of policy work, work that is the result of partnership between the council and administration, and these are shared accomplishments. And I think we would all do well on behalf of the community to remember that none of these accomplishments would be possible without that partnership. Equally as important, I believe there's value in celebrating these shared accomplishments. Too often, the focus is on what isn't working. And while there are always opportunities to improve, it's absolutely true that any workforce in any organization in any sector in any part of the world needs positive feedback and recognition for work done well. This council has taken efforts this year to better understand our workplace culture. And I would simply offer that every major study shows that workplace culture is set at the top of an organization, and that recognition and respect for work is critical to a high-performance organization. These reports highlight accomplishments that council members can rightfully take pride in, but those accomplishments are equally the outcomes and results of the contributions of the city's professional workforce in all 25 departments. And they need and deserve positive recognition for those efforts. Finally, I think it's important to point out that this energetic pace and the high volume of work comes at a price, sometimes a steep one. These reports track only certain types of actions, the most important, to be sure. But these reports don't track the total number of actions taken by council. For example, this report reflects a total of 104 different actions in four different categories. But council has taken final action this year so far on 1,170 different and distinct matters just this year. So these reports are tracking only about 8% of the total volume of council's work. And again, even in that 8% volume, council is moving at a significant pace. I raised this point during my presentation of the Legislative Department's 2025 budget this last month. And that point is this: the city enterprise, including the Legislative Department, is often hard-pressed to keep up with the council's demands. And again, let me be clear, that is not the result of disagreement or misalignment or lack of will. It's simply a matter of capacity. Every department has one or more core lines of business that they must manage and services that they must deliver every day. And those business lines and those services have nothing to do with council's legislative proposals and directives. The reality is that those proposals and directives are in addition to that core work. Those policy proposals and directives are all in addition to the press of our day-to-day business and the general operations of this city enterprise. And this incredible pace and the volume that we've experienced this year are nearly overwhelming. The core functions of our departments don't have extra resources to accommodate that legislative work. Instead, that work is subsumed into the regular order of business each day within existing resources and capacity. And we feel that even in our department. So when the volume of legislative work ramps up to this degree, we do reach a tipping point within individual departments and collectively as an enterprise. Years ago, I heard this phrase, "It's great to be on the leading edge, but you have to be careful not to trip and become the bleeding edge." I offer that caution for your due consideration as council as we rush to the end of the year, we get into the heart of council's 2025 budget work, and as we look forward to another productive year in 2025. So with that as background, I'll turn to the details of the second tracking report. And again, the second report tracks all items covered in those four categories from January 1 through the close of the council cycle, which ended October 17. We begin with two slides focused on ordinances. The first slide addresses ordinances that have reached a final dispositive action in the legislative process. In total, during the reporting period, the council has taken final action on a total of 38 ordinances. That's an increase of 16 since August, noting that many of those items reported in August were close to being finished. A total of 24 uncodified ordinances have been enacted through October 17. These matters relate to routine business where the law requires that action be done in the form of an ordinance. Technically, those actions are not truly legislative in character. They're really more administrative in nature. However, because the law requires the action to be made by ordinance, those numbers are included here. These include, for example, actions tied to salary adjustments and zoning map amendments. When we remove those 24 uncodified ordinances from the queue, it means council has enacted a total of 14 ordinances this year through October 17. Of that total number, two were preempted by the state legislature, which I reported in August, which means that 10 ordinances have been fully processed, were positively enacted, and have been codified. We've also included those citations and hyperlinks to the code of ordinances in the notes column. There are two ordinances that have been enacted but not yet codified. This slide addresses all ordinances and proposals for ordinances where final action has not yet been taken. As you can see, there are 27 proposals in flight as of October 17. And of that total, I'm pleased to report that 22 show active progress being made at the various stages in the legislative process. And again, I'll point out that this reflects productive collaboration between council and administration. There are five instances of that total, though, where a proposal has been suspended or postponed for further review and reflection, or because a related priority needs to be addressed first to ensure the correct sequencing before work resumes on a specific proposal. These five are identified in the notes column, in the ordinance table, in your report. Of the proposals in queue, 22 have been referred to staff for development. So in the majority of cases, again, there is collaboration taking place, and those proposals are moving through the process on a track for final action, even possibly this year. As of this report, two proposals are currently under council review, one is under committee review. I expect that those matters also could be enacted before the end of the year, or if not, very soon into the beginning of next year. As in the first report, clerks have also included here some comparable data on the lower part of this slide for reference. You can see the combination of the enacted ordinances and pending ordinances result in a total of 41 ordinances or proposed ordinances that are in flight during this reporting period from January 1 through October 17. You can see how that ranks in comparison to the data for the same time period from 2022 and 2023. And again, you can see that council this year is ahead of this mark in both of those prior years. This slide shows data for enterprise policies. As you can see, a total of eight policies have been adopted so far this year. To the best of my knowledge, there are no other policies in queue at this point in time. In total, however, there were a total of nine policies that were introduced during the reporting period. Of those, one proposed policy did not win support from council and failed at committee. So that gives us the total of eight adopted policies, including one that was adopted over the veto of the mayor. Here again, clerks have provided a summary with comparable data on policies from 2022 and 2023. This slide shows data for the status of legislative directives. As you can see, a total of 31 legislative directives have been adopted during the reporting period. That's an increase of 11 new directives adopted since the report in August. Of the total number, 21 have been approved by the mayor and referred to the administration, and an additional five have been deemed approved, meaning the mayor did not approve or veto them. So that's a total of about 84% of all of the legislative directives adopted by council this year being approved or deemed approved and forwarded on to the administration between January 1 and October 17. The mayor has not vetoed a single legislative directive during this reporting period. Of the 31 legislative directives issued by council, 14 have already had reports back from the administration and been closed. So that's a closure rate of about 45%. And most of those were completed within the timeframe that was set by council. Of the remaining 17 outstanding directives, four have report back dates scheduled for this year. There are five where the mayor is pending review from this last cycle, and we did not update the report. And here again, there is a summary of comparable data from the two previous years. As you can see, the volume of legislative directives this year is equal to this point in time from last year, but significantly higher from 2022. And I think that's explained, at least in part, because the policy on legislative directives was adopted in late 2022, as you'll recall. So the work to use and implement legislative directives started very late that year. And here, we're showing the status of staff directives. Again, as a level set, these are directions from council to its own legislative department. So that means these are directives from council to the clerk and the auditor. In total, you can see there were 26 staff directives adopted this year. That's slightly less than the number of legislative directives to the administration. And of that total, 11 have already had a report back to the appropriate council committee and been closed. Of the remaining 15, 13 have a report date that is included and have been scheduled. Six of those are set for 2025 or even into 2026. There are two directives that were given where a report is not required. Finally, the clerks have very carefully reviewed LEMS files from 2022 and 2023 in order to provide some comparable data. You can see that there has been significant growth in the number of staff directives this year in contrast to those prior years. I think this is primarily attributable to the change in government structure in 2022, as well as the development of a more robust legislative department beginning in 2023 and carrying forward into the current year. The volume of work shown in 2024, especially the work that's been completed in response to those directives, is primarily the result of the work of the Policy and Research Division, affectionately known as PAR. The vast majority of directives in 2024 have been to this very small but mighty team of three in the auditor's office. So having summarized the data in the report, let me turn to next steps before concluding my prepared remarks. This slide provides an anticipated timeline for future regular reports. As I noted in August, staff envisions a regular cadence of quarterly tracking reports. I'm prepared to provide a top-of-the-year report in January so that we can level set with council and administration on the status of work that carries forward from this year into 2025. Thereafter, we would anticipate presenting a report at the end of each quarter. So that would mean regular reports to this body in March, June, September, and then December. Reports would generally follow the same format with a formal presentation to accompany the submitted printed report, and then the opportunity for the committee to query the administration about specific items. And with that, Mr. Chair, I've completed my prepared presentation. I'm happy to respond to specific questions or to defer to staff from the departments who may be here on specific items.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, for the presentation and for being flexible twice. As you presented this presentation before the body, I really appreciate it. I'll check the queue and see if any of my colleagues have any questions. President Payne?
Thank you, Chair Chavez. You spoke to this, Mr. Clerk, that every time this body creates an action, it's potentially getting inserted into an existing body of work or work product that the administration is doing. One way of mitigating some of the disruption of that is having our own legislative capacity. We've demonstrated that in the Policy and Research Group. I'm curious if, and maybe he was the clerk, isn't the best person, but I see COs here, not that you have to come up, but, you know, there is oftentimes a legislative directive that is trying to shape policy. We're trying to get the information that we need to go to the next step to develop policy. And I'm curious around, you know, as we are in maturing, what this new government structure looks like, which is not going to happen in one year, and it's not going to happen in one term, and it's going to be an ongoing process. If you have any perspective on what that right balance of capacity is when it comes to meeting the needs of the legislative branch versus the administrative branch?
Through the chair, Council President Payne. A great topic, and I think I would echo a comment I've heard Councilor Burkowski say, that we are learning to flex new muscles. And I think that's what you also just hinted at. I don't know that we have the right, or that we have the ability to say what that right mix of resources available to sort of the legislative branch versus the administration is. But one of the things I think the second report in particular highlighted, and I appreciate Councilmember Wansley asking to have staff directions to the Legislative Department added as a tracking item, because when we went and looked through that and went back to the first report and started adding, you'll see there's a lot of cross-referencing. Even in the first part on ordinances and policies, we've cross-referenced into work that PAR is doing to show that there is a connection between the administration and PAR being demonstrated. It's early, but it was interesting to me as just an observation that there is a lot of connectivity happening between PAR in terms of supporting a general research, a general understanding of a topic area, and then the work of the professionals of the administration to highlight how that fits within our organization, within our legal framework. And I think that that partnership in particular will continue to grow. I think another area that is yet unexplored is the partnership that will come between Oversight and Evaluation, another division that's new to the Legislative Department, and how it will connect on sort of the backend of things, in terms of closing those loops. Did we achieve the goals from a policy perspective we set out to achieve? So I do think that as we, the legislative branch, start exercising those functions and really flexing those muscles and learning to operate that way, hopefully we'll see a lot more of that coordination and collaboration between the two branches.
Thank you.
All right. Well, that's the only person on cue. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. We appreciate that. Oh. Okay. Councilmember Jenkins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess if, even if we have our own legislative process, they would still need to go to staff, the experts to, so instead of quote a legislative directive, they would just, PAR would be asking those questions in the midst of the day-to-day work that these departments are doing. Is that an accurate assessment?
Through the chair, Councilmember Jenkins, I think that is an accurate assessment of what PAR and Oversight and Evaluation and other functions within the legislative branch could and should do in the future is partner with their peers in the administration. It is a fact that when any legislative body takes an act, it is by the very nature of that act empowering the administration to act, right? So having those relationships, having that coordination, and having that ability to collaborate between the legislative and the executive or the administration at that staff level, between policy and research, Oversight and Evaluation, the experts that are in the administration, I think can only benefit the council's policy work. And so I think, to your point, yes, they can act independently, but they certainly need to act in collaboration and conjunction with the administration.
Which doesn't necessarily address the capacity issue, per se.
Through the chair. I think that my comments about capacity are more about what's driven by council and not by resources either in the legislative branch or the administration. There is a limit to what we can achieve as an organization, as an enterprise, while we're also doing our day-to-day business, while we are delivering the services that departments are set up to do. So I think there is an expectation of how much of that work, that legislative product can be done regardless of whether that's assigned to resources in the Legislative Department or to the administration.
Thank you, Senator.
All right.
Thank you for that very detailed presentation as well.
Thank you.
Great. So seeing no further discuss, oh, yeah, seeing no further discussion, I would direct a clerk to file that report.
Thank you.
Next, we will have reports from standing committees, and I'll just ask members to please make this go by really quickly because we got to get out of here soon. First, we'll start off with the administration, enterprise, oversight, and I'll pass it on to the vice chair of that committee, Councilmember Pomassano. Councilmember Pomassano.
Mr. Chair, I'll try to be brief. The Administration and Enterprise Oversight Committee is bringing forward 21 items for approval on Thursday. The first three are routine gift acceptances. Item number four is 2024 Property Tax Special Assessment and Adjustments for Delinquent Utility Charges. Item number five is a legislative directive for public safety capital projects. Item number six is a bid for the Convention Center remodel. Item number seven is a bid for Phillips Traffic Safety Project. Item number eight is low bid for 38th Avenue South Sanitary Sewer Replacement. Item, the next two are the fire remediation cleanup and improvement projects at the old Third Precinct, 3,000 Minnehaha. Item number 11 is a bid for Fulton Residential ADA Pedestrian Ramps. Item number 12 is a contract for the 311 system. Item 13 are legal services for our bond transactions, essentially. Item number 14 is a state grant for MFD training apparatus expansion. Item 15 is a small contract for the design services for that. Item number 16 is an up-to-five-year lease for the SOC, or the MT school we rent at 42nd and Dupont. Item number 17 is a personal injury accident case legal settlement. And then there are four legal settlements on workers' comp claims. Thank you.
Thank you. The next committee is the Budget Committee, and I'll pass it on to the chair of that committee, Vice President Chuck Ty.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Budget Committee is bringing forward five items to this Thursday's City Council meeting. Item number one is a staff direction related to municipal revenue sources. Item number two is approving an increase to the appointed nonrepresented and politically-appointed employee salary schedules for 2025. Item number three and four are approving the establishment of and the salary schedule for two appointed positions within the Office of City Clerk. And then item number four, and then item number five is passage of three resolutions amending the 2024 General Appropriation Resolution related to the American Rescue Plan Act reappropriation. I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you. Next, we have the Business Housing and Zoning Committee, and I'll pass it to the chair of that committee, Councilmember Osman.
Thank you, Chair Chavez. The Business Housing and Zoning Committee will be bringing 18 items on Thursday Council meeting. Item one is approving a liquor license for Stargazer. Item two is approving a liquor license for Queer Munity. Item three is approving an interim use permit for our Savior's Community Services. Item four is a passage of resolution approving 2024 levy for special assessment. Item five is a passage of resolution approving the emergency stabilization land sales. Item six is a passage of resolution approving the land sale for 3415 Second Street North. Item seven is denying an appeal regarding the decision of the zoning board of adjustment. Item eight is deleting from the agenda liquor license renovation for Jewel of India. Item nine is deleting from the agenda the liquor and tobacco license renovation for Breakfast Bar of Minnesota. Item 10 is approving three liquor license renewal. Item 11 is approving seven liquor license renewal. Item 12 is approving one gambling license and deleting from the agenda item 12.2, the gambling license for Coon Rabbit Lions. Item 13 is approving a great street loan for Blissbury Creative. Item 14 is approving a great street loan for Native American Community Clinic. Item 15 is approving a master grant contract with the state for employment-related services. Item 16, a passage of resolution approving the carry-forward of tax-exempt housing revenue bond from 2024. Item 17 is approving technical change to the zoning code ordinance. Item 18 is approving the 4D affordable housing renovation. This is being forwarded without recommendation. I'll stand for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have the Climate and Infrastructure Committee, chaired by Councilmember Cashman.
Thanks, Chair Chavez. Climate and Infrastructure Committee has 13 items. Item one is a large block event permit for Holodazzle on Nicollet Mall, December 18 through 22. Item two is approving a large block permit for Welcome Downtown Target, also Nicollet Mall, November 18 through 21. Item three is authorizing a cooperative agreement with Metro Transit for mobility hub planning work. Item four is authorizing a cooperative agreement with the Minnesota Department of Transportation in Hennepin County for traffic signal work on Trunk Highway 121. Item five is authorizing acceptance of a grant from Mendot for the Phillips Traffic Safety Project and Anderson United Safe Road to School. Item six is accepting federal grant funding from the U.S. Department of Transportation and the Minnesota Department of Transportation for the Safe Streets for All program. Item seven is accepting federal and state transportation grant funding for various city transportation projects. Item eight is adopting City Minneapolis and Park Board Stormwater Management Program. Item nine is concurring with the City Engineers' variance request for the Whittier International Elementary Safe Road to School project. Item 10, authorizing the submission of a grant application for development of the BioChar facility. Item 11, adjusting our capital improvement program appropriation and revenue for construction change orders. Item 12, authorizing the submission of an application for federal transportation funds through the RACE program. And item 13 is authorizing the submission of an application for the IIJA match program. I'll stand for questions on these items.
Thank you. And lastly, it's me with the Public Health and Safety Committee. We're bringing forward 12 items for approval. Item number one is Civil Rights Commission appointments.